Okay, we'll come to order. Today is the Wednesday, May 19th, 2010. Regular meeting in the Glendale Planning Commission. Please call roll.
Commissioner Landrigan.
Present.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Sheets.
Here.
Commissioner Yossiyan and Chairperson Kane.
Here. A report regarding post-it agenda, please.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on Wednesday, May 12th, 2010, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
All right. Would everyone please join me in recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation for God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that Mr. Lee has joined us. Approval or comments, I'm sorry, comments or corrections through the May 15th meeting minutes?
I'd like to move the minutes.
Second.
Except.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just to be accepted, I'm sorry. Didn't complete my sentence.
All right. Call roll on that, please.
Landrigan.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner Sheets.
Aye.
Chairperson Kane.
Aye. On a vote of four to zero, the minutes of May 5th, 2010 have been approved without comment or correction. Speakers cards, well, first off, moving forward to oral communications, I have no speakers cards on that matter. So we'll move on to a continuation. I'm zoning appeal, new business conditional use permit case PCUP 2009-022. It's at 122 East Chevy Chase Drive, units A and B, commonly known as the Moonlight Family Restaurant. The appellant is Adams Hill Neighborhood Association. The applicant is Ogannis Medean. And it was a conditional use permit to allow the onsite sale, service, and consumption of alcoholic beverages at a full-service restaurant in the C1 neighborhood commercial zone described as a portion of Lot 6, tract 4716, and a portion of Lot 35 Watts subdivision. And the understanding is they would like the planning department suggesting the case be continued?
I move.
Hold on.
Yes, yes.
And the reason for the continuance?
Due to improper noticing.
On the city's part or the applicant?
On the applicant's part.
Or appellant?
Yes, the appellant.
All right.
I'm sorry, the applicant, the applicant's part.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Any comments? If not, let's have a motion to continue, please, to date certain without further notice.
I so move that this case being to June 16th, 2010, without further public notice.
Second.
Motion's for, call roll, please.
Commissioner Landrigan.
Aye.
Commissioner Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner Sheets.
Aye.
And Chairperson Kane.
Aye. And a vote of four to zero, PCUP case 2009-022 is continued to June 16th, 2010, without further public notice. All right, we're moving on to new business, special recreation development review case PSR 2010-001. The location is 1041 Shirley Jean Street. The applicant is Bill Kempton. The property owner is the Jewish Federation Council of Greater Los Angeles. It's a request to construct a 270-square-foot addition to an existing 389-square-foot restroom located within the northwest portion of Camp Max Strauss in the SR special recreation zone. The project is exempt from CEQA. The recommendation is that the planning commission approve the proposal with conditions. Staff is represented by Gabriel Riza.
Yes, yes, Mr. Chair. The next case item before you is case number PSR 2010-001. The applicant is requesting to do a 270-square-foot addition to an existing restroom. I am going to describe the existing terrain of the complex first and then go over to my design review analysis of the project. Camp Max Strauss sits on approximately 112-acre site with an entrance off of Shirley Jean Street. The property is zoned special recreation and is designated recreation open space by the general plan. The majority of development is located on the eastern portion of the site. The proposed project involves construction of a new 270-square-foot addition to an existing restroom facility. The location of the building and the proposed addition is to the northwest portion of the Camp Max Strauss facility and will not be visible from Shirley Jean Road. Proposed materials such as hardy panel, vertical siding, and composition roof singles will be incorporated to match the existing design. The project site is over 600 feet away from the main entrance of the complex and cannot be seen from any adjacent residential areas. Overall, the project's mass and scale appears to be compatible in its relation to the existing buildings onsite. There are a number of trees located near the proposed addition. The improvements will not require the removal or encroach upon any protected indigenous trees. Staff has reviewed the proposed improvement and concludes that they are consistent with the overall intent of the municipal code. Relative exhibits are posted on the board. I do have some photographs that I will pass on to the commissioners right now. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of this project with conditions as stated in the staff report. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Was this run past all the city departments?
Yes, it was.
No comments from any?
Not necessarily. We have a couple of comments here regarding public works, the protection of any indigenous trees be maintained during the construction, and the only noted comment was from the fire department. They just simply stated that this is a high fire, excuse me, high-fire hazarded area and that the sprinklers will need to be installed into the new addition as well. Currently, they have sprinklers in the facility. They are simply requiring the sprinklers to continue into the new addition.
So the shower room has sprinklers as well as the shower house?
That is correct. I believe that's.
Seems kind of redundant, but okay.
Yes. Yes, they do.
Any other questions for staff at this time? All right, we have one speaker card. It's representing the applicant, Mr. Kempton.
Did you open?
I'm sorry.
Sorry. Did you, I don't know if you opened the hearing and I just didn't hear.
Oh, well, after, we'll open the hearing. Thank you very much.
My name is Bill.
Are we having a problem with the speaker's mic?
All right, and we're going to ask you to hold for a moment since you're not being.
Okay. Think you're live.
Now you can continue. We think your mic was dead for a while.
Okay. We wanted to incorporate an ADA bath, shower, and bath facility at that end of the camp to accommodate the rising number of students that are coming, I mean, excuse me, campers that are coming at the summertime, the students that are there. And we believe that we have done a great job with this design and met all our expectations. And that's about it.
All right. Any questions for the applicant at this time? Seeing, I'm sorry, Ms. Landrigan.
Mr. Kempton, did you also provide ADA accessibility to the restroom?
Absolutely, yes. There is currently at the facility, there is a concrete sidewalk, but it just stops at the dirt road because we do not have paved roads there. So there will be a graded area, and we've met the actual distances, five by six, entry and exit from the building, yes.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments from staff?
No, sir, not at this time.
I'm going to go on the presumption you don't have much in the way of rebuttal.
No.
All right. Any other questions from the commission in terms of the speaker or from staff at this time? All right, I'll close the public hearing. We'll enter deliberations, comments. Who'd like to go first? Ms. Landrigan?
I'd like to look at one more thing before I see it here. I think that it's, now I see the colored drawings up there, in keeping with Camp Max Strauss. Don't see it being any of a huge impact. I think it's fine, and I have no concerns about it.
All right. Anybody want to add anything else? Mr. Lee, Mr. Sheets?
The same way.
Echo the same thing. It's not hurting the trees. It's a modest addition, fits in with the current designs. Sounds good to me as well. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll take it. I move that upon review and consideration of all materials and exhibits of the current record relative to the development plan review case number PSR 2010-001 located at 1041 Shirley Jean Street, and after having conducted a hearing on said matter, that the planning commission hereby recommends approval with conditions of this said application.
Motion's for, call roll, please.
Commissioner Landrigan.
Aye.
Commissioner Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner Sheets.
Aye.
Chairperson Kane.
Aye. And a vote of four to zero, the special recreation development case PSR 2010-001 has been approved with the conditions as prepared by staff. All right, we'll move on to the next agenda item. Before I formally introduce it, have we heard any more about the applicant's availability?
The applicant has arrived voluntarily.
They have made it, okay. Process of elimination, I suspected that they're out there now. All right. So we can continue with that matter. If you gentlemen are planning to speak, you do need to fill out a speaker card, please. All right, we'll move on to special recreation development review case PSR 2008-004 and environmental information form initial study case PEIF 2008-011. It's at 3151 East Glen Oaks Boulevard. The applicant is T-Mobile West Corp., and it is a request to construct an unmanned wireless telecommunication facility consisting of 12 panel antennas mounted atop a new 35-foot-high monopole and four equipment cabinets with the ability to add two additional cabinets in the SR special recreation zone described as a portion of Lot C, Sycamore Canyon tract, and a portion of Lot 89 Watts subdivision. We have environmental information form initial study case PEIF 2008-011 with a notice of intent to adopt a negative declaration, and it is recommended that we adopt the environmental information form and approve the case with conditions. Mr. Joe, would you like to give us an overview of the case, please?
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I'm going to approach the board to continue my presentation. Once again, this is a SR review or special recreation development review for a telecommunication tower, monopole wireless facility. It's proposed to be 30 feet, 35 feet in height, 30-foot-high pole with a five-foot-high beacon. It will have four equipment cabinets with two additional cabinets for future growth and an eight-foot-high split-faced concrete CMU wall as an enclosure. The zoning of this property is SR, which I put the zoning map on the screen right there for you. And the general plan for this property is recreational open space. The site is approximately six acres in size. It's a secondary ridge line. Characteristics of the site, existing on the site, there is a 20-foot-high existing monopole with exposed equipment without permits. It is believed it was constructed in 2007. The location has been previously disturbed from this construction of this unpermitted tower. Access proposed to the proposed location, which is going to be where the exact same one is, as shown on this aerial photo right here and also on this site plan right here, is from an existing GWP paved access road, which takes access from Glen Oaks Canyon, as you can see from the photo over here, and also from the site plan. The applicant proposes to add two additional, I'm sorry, to add two paved parking spaces for utility vehicles to maintain this proposed facility at the end and a unpaved pedestrian access so they can walk to the site to minimize any further disturbance of this area. To go on the background of this application, there was a previous conditional use permit back then, which just required a conditional, approved back in May of 2004. Additionally, in 2007, there was a 10-year lease agreement with the city, and the wireless telecommunication for the CUP, the wireless telecommunication facility by the CUP was constructed without building permit application, so there's nothing on file for this. So therefore, since something has been constructed, I'm sorry, since the building permit has not been approved within two years of this approval, it was terminated. Therefore, that conditional use permit was null. The applicant on record for this conditional use permit that was terminated was singular wireless. The applicant today for this SR review is T-Mobile West Corp., which had purchased this wireless telecommunication facility from the previous carrier and is asking for approval for this SR review. And since this is in the SR zone, it is the planning commission's responsibility for this application to review the design of the project. And the facility, once again, consists of this 35-foot-high monopole, 30-foot-high pole, 5-foot-high beacon, 12 antenna panels, as shown on these elevations, four equipment cabinets, two additional cabinets, 8-foot-high split-faced CMU wall, and it will be in the exact same location. The antennas will be mounted on various heights. Existing paved access road will be utilized, which is access from Glen Oaks, and all the equipment will be located inside the block of the proposed 8-foot-high CMU wall. Surrounding around the area, there's a Shoal Canyon Ball Field. There's the water tower. The applicant has considered co-locating onto an existing utility equipment, however, per GWP's comments, it would be infeasible as it would be a security concern as it's gated off, and we wouldn't want different maintenance people to go into the water tower. The design of this wireless telecommunication facility has been purposely designed without any camouflage techniques. As you can see, there are no trees or anything else that you can mimic. It's been agreed with staff as to be designed as a monopole as there's an existing water tower out there in this utility equipment. The power for the facility is proposed to be underground across Glen Oaks and connecting to the ball field. And that pretty much concludes staff's presentation. Staff has left a memo for the file and each commissioner's desk to, new condition number nine, to read as, "The applicant shall sign a stipulation of removal for the existing unpermitted tower within 30 days of the finalization of the building permit for the proposed tower. This special recreational development review shall not be valid until stipulation informed satisfactorily to the director of community planning department, has been signed by the applicant, and submitted to the plans section." And this concludes my presentation. I'm available for comments, questions, and comments.
Let's have you return to your seat, unless, was it something you wanted to report?
That has to do with this.
All right, I'm sorry.
Mr. Joe, did the Parks Department approve the plan view of where the electrical connection is going to cross through the ball field? Has that been reviewed by the department?
Yes, we do. We had a meeting, and we had them pretty much address all the concerns as comments for the file. They're well aware of it. I believe there is a. You know, there's conditions on there for them to do the proper review with their respective departments, whether it's going to be GWP or the Parks and Recs Department as well. But to answer your question, yes.
Because it goes through the DG portion of the field, and it also goes through several trees, and it's pretty intrusive in that area.
Well.
So I would assume that it would have been run by that department, since that's where they're taking it from. It's not just the city's electrical.
Yeah, I understand. They're well aware of that the ground has been previously disturbed. Now, I'd like to remind that the existing tower out there right now has already been constructed. They've already done the work, but the city's basically asking them to do the right thing and pull the permits for these underground utilities.
So are you saying that utility line is existing?
That's correct.
We might ask if they want to qualify whether they're upgrading the power or something like that, but it is an existing line.
Okay. Thank you.
Let the record show, we were joined by Commissioner Yossiyan, and he'll be able to fully participate in the hearing. Okay, anything else at this moment?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
This facility, I see one monopole there now. Is it for future expansion? Is it designed to accommodate more than one pole? Or is there a future plan for this? And if there is, is it coming back to us again for review?
Are you commenting on the future cabinets that can be?
Well, and the pole too. I mean, you have constructed this site for this monopole facility. Is this designed for just one monopole?
I believe it could be expanded, but I guess we can ask the applicant to, I guess, talk about the overall design and how they constructed this and their futures for expanding or not, but.
And if I may add, please, we recently completed the wireless telecommunications ordinance, and we learned through that that state law requires us for co-location to provide an easier level of review. State sort of mandates that, but I believe that means on the same pole. If it's a second, if it's a new, a new structure alongside of it, that would come back to the commission.
Ms. Landrigan?
On A1, which is not up there, but is in our packets, it shows a fuel mod zone that looks to be, well, I was trying to see because I think that it's not the scale, correct scale at least. But, so what is happening in the fuel mod zone? Because it has the building being 20 feet, so it looks to me like there's a 30-foot fuel mod zone around the existing building, and I don't know what's happening in there. Is the city going to require that all of that vegetation is going to be removed?
The, there's a condition, number 12, which was, reflects comments from the fire department, they, which reads, "Fire hazard abatement shall be maintained 30 feet around the CMU enclosure. A right-of-entry permit is required for fire hazard abatement beyond this leased area and within 20 feet," I'm sorry, 30 feet of the CMU enclosure. I believe what the applicant is trying to state is this is the area that they are, they will clear annually for the fire abatement.
Are there any protected trees within that area?
All the labels are shrubs, but that's a good question.
Well, I would be curious. They do show existing trees in, I mean, it's kind of a confusing packet in some ways because it shows existing trees to remain. They seem to be in the fuel mod. They just call them shrubs. There's, they're not identified in a manner that would be appropriate in a tree report.
Based on the photograph, it doesn't appear to be, but that's pretty long distance away.
That could be.
It's some distance away, I agree.
Yeah.
It too kind of shows some shrubs there, but I don't see any trees.
Well, there aren't any really good close-up pictures of the site. That was a problem. And then also, to me, it looks like there are oak trees within this one photograph that I have, but I can't tell the location, and it looks like they're on that back hillside. Especially if you look on A1, there's a very large-looking tree there. It looks to be 20 feet across, same size as the building.
Hard to say because the hill drops off pretty quick.
The old set, because they revised their plans, it does show on A1 that there are no protected trees, oak base, sycamore, but on the revised set, which I have right here, I didn't post up, I apologize, but it doesn't have that note, but perhaps maybe we can ask the applicant to clarify this, if there has been a reason why it was taken off when they revised the set.
Anything else for staff at this moment?
Those are my concerns.
All right. Yeah, go ahead. And by the way, I guess I'll consider the public hearing open. I don't know if I should do it now or in a minute, but continue on, please.
I guess, back to one of the items that was questioned before, for clarity, the current power versus the new power, is there, how does, how is the current site being fed with power?
There's an underground line that you'll see trail across the ball field, kind of near third base.
I see it here, but is that the way it's being fed now?
That's existing.
Is that going to change?
That was my question.
The proposed plans do not indicate that, but we can clarify with the applicant.
Just wanted to know.
Sure.
Because the reason I brought it up, there is a note right on the page talking about directional boring. I don't know if that's because they have to do that now or that's a note relating to what happened previously, so, let me see, one of, maybe the applicant will answer this, but I'll ask now just in case. This is an existing tower. It's functioning, and the site is going to be used, that exact site is going to be used for the new pole. I just wondered what the process was to transition or cut over from one to the other and what that might look like. one to the other and what that might look like. I imagine the applicant would be better to answer that. That's all I have.
Sure.
I'm Mike.
Do we know how many homes were contacted for this applicant, if any?
Approximately 170 addresses, or the properties, 170 properties have been notified. The reason behind that, what the code states is that if there are contiguous parcels owned by the same owner, which is the applicant, or by the same landowner, which is the city, the adjacent, or the ones that, or the immediate adjacent to the contiguous parcels need to be notified. Most of those were residents, but about 170 have been identified, or been mailed out to.
So, that was outside of the 300 radius?
That's correct.
You went out to get the other homes as well?
The code, yes, the code requires if the same owner of contiguous parcels of the-
Right.
Yes.
So, and there was not one letter from them?
We had received two phone calls, just generally asking about the application, and one person had visited the counters just to kind of go over the environmental and the proposed plan, but I've always encouraged for any comments, but none has been received by staff.
Anything else at this time? All right. We'll let the applicant come forward and present their case.
Good evening, Chair, members of the commission, staff. My name is Anthony Serpa, and I am representing T-Mobile with this application, and I'm open to questions. I'll address a few of the issues that commission members have brought up now, and if you have any other questions, just feel free to interrupt me for clarification, or if I'm not answering the question. The first question was about the existing electrical run, the power run. That is existing, and it is running the existing tower now, and it is of sufficient structure that we won't have to upgrade it. That's what we're going to use on the new tower as well. And to answer the question about colocation, the, most cell towers are designed to be colocatable. This one, we've designed to keep it as minimally invasive as possible. It's just the height that we need, but it could theoretically, at a future date, be added on to, but that wasn't our original intent and purpose. We just wanted to keep it just for our purposes and just to satisfy our needs at this point.
Clarify, to clarify, added on to, do you mean add on antennas, or do you mean add another pole?
Well, the way it's designed, it's sort of a short squat pole, 35 feet. You could put another section, say a 10-foot section on top of it, and bolt it to it, and then put another carrier on top, so our antennas would be down here and would do that, but that's-
So, you'd add on just the same monopole-
You could do that.
Figuration, it wouldn't be a second monopole.
They may have to, what they do called drop and swap, they may have to take that pole away because it wouldn't pass structural for adding on to it, but it wouldn't be a second pole right beside it.
All right, that was my question.
To piggyback on that, may I?
Mm-hmm.
So, the structural foundation you would put down for the pole would be able to withstand any addition, so you would not have to come in again?
Yes, they're, they're overdesigned. Yeah, the case on would be of sufficient, they would, when they do the structural, they would design it at, say, 150% of what it had to be, or something of that. With respect to the question about the fire abatement, we're going to comply with all of fire department's requests and conditions, of course, and I was just out at the site last month, and it's, it's pretty rocky out there, and there, there isn't a lot of bush and shrubbery to segue into the next comment about the trees area. There is no significant trees that I can recall.
When you had the survey done, did you, did you ask them to record any trees of?
Yeah, they, they, usually there's, there's a threshold, and I think it's eight-inch in diameter of the trunk.
Correct.
So, any of those trees are noted on here. Some of the ones, I typically ask for significant shrubs, like some shrubs, well, you and I wouldn't call them a shrub if they were in our front yard, but sometimes we like to delineate them.
Which sheet would they be noted on?
They should be on the site plan, A1, they're shrubs, and if you turn to site plan, it's sheet A1 in the bottom right-hand corner.
If I may kind of add, what the file indicates in regards to the protected trees on the site, this application has been routed to Public Works and the Urban Forester, and no comments have come in in regards to any protected trees or any, or has there been any indication that they felt that there would be any detriment to any protected trees?
Do they, I mean, I'm just asking you this question. When they go out, do they look to see if it's in a fuel mod zone when they make that determination? Because if they're looking in an area that they know that the construction impact is going to be, they look at it in a different manner than if they're looking at 30 feet away, which is another criteria. So, I don't know if that is given to whoever is doing the review. So, that's the question I have, because in several of these drawings that we do have in front of us, if they are done to scale, which one hopes they are, at least I hope they are, there is a sheet, A2, which shows the scaled drawing of the building and the monopole, and it shows a shrub, called a shrub, in the upper corner, that it's a significant shrub. Some might call it a tree. And those are just the questions I have. It just was a question that is, you have close-up pictures? Because, see, there are no close-up pictures. That was the concern, too.
Yeah, there, there was a document from 2009 in here that is a photo, and it does show, may I approach?
Sure.
Photo there of the existing site here, and that was-
Just the hillside. Almost looks like a scrub oak.
Yeah, I mean, I thought it looked like an oak myself, but I- That could be a scrub oak. It's a clerkus diglessina probably.
Got me. I went out there, didn't seem that close.
Just making sure we weren't cutting you off.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't present it before the board. Oh, it's fine. Oh, okay, okay.
One we didn't use, but it's representative of a photo of the area. And I think we had our question answered about the mailings and how many houses were notified. I'm available to answer any further questions?
Mr. Sheets?
Thank you. The question again, the transition or cut over process.
Oh, yes, sorry, that was the-
Tell me what happens there.
That was another one. That actually segues into condition nine, that memo that you have. Since we have a temporary pole there now and we're on air, we would like to stay on air for emergency services and service and coverage in the area while we construct the new pole. So, what we'll do is we'll leave, we'll enter into that agreement, we'll pull our building permit, and we'll leave the existing pole up, and the new one will be constructed as close as possible to the existing site, so typically within 10 feet. And once that is built, then we'll switch over, what it's called, and we'll remove the existing site.
So, there's no turn-down time? The plan is to cut over whilst-
Correct. We're going to endeavor to stay on air, and it'll just be an immediate switch.
It's just difficult to, with the drawings and actually seeing the site, it was difficult to tell where the new pole was going relative to the existing pole, and the existing, the existing equipment is not attached to the pole correctly. It's only temporary. It's like chained.
Correct. The existing equipment that's out there today is just two cabinets that are right in front of the pole, and they're just on a little flat concrete pad.
Right, but the, but the unit on the pole is just chained to the pole. It's not, it's not physically attached other than that.
Correct, correct.
Permanently attached.
No.
Just concerned about what that might do if it's still hot when you cut it over relative to the shrubbery and such.
Yeah, no, well, they take precautions when they, they do the cut over.
Okay. Thank you.
Will there be any landscaping? I mean, I thought we required in our-
Yeah, we have, I think Mr. Joe can speak to, to the application. We haven't, we haven't shown any, but we could, could add some if it seemed appropriate in the area.
Well, it seems a little misleading on A3 that there are existing shrubs that are eight feet tall after that photograph.
Yes, and I should apologize. These drawings were originally prepared in 2007. May have been something that happened with those shrubs.
They died.
Speak to that.
Burned down.
Yeah, the shrubs tend to do that sometimes.
Does that say 3/9/2010 on it?
Yes, and, and that was the reissue date, but the original drawings that I had updated were from 2007, I believe, and all that update was, was the names, and then we went out to make-
They're big.
We made sure the site was still there, of course, and the plan was the same, but I would take responsibility for not taking those shrubs off. I'm sorry.
Or putting them in, maybe.
I have a question on your view three. Unless I'm orient, oriented incorrectly, where the little notes says proposed monopole, I just don't think that jives on a couple counts with the location as indicated on A1. And I sure don't think the height of it jives with what it would be. I mean, you're talking about a site that's 10, at least 10 feet higher than the ball field and a 30, and a 30-foot-plus tower on top of that, so this, this looks to be about the height of a chain-link fence, the way it's drawn. And again, I don't think it's there. I think it's far more to the left in that photo. Are you familiar with the photo I'm referring to? Would you like to?
Yeah, do you mind I?
No, please.
Oh, this, this is a photo simulation, which is conjecture, and-
I'll say.
Yeah.
I don't see the shrubs that we were talking about a minute ago either in that photo.
No, this photo is actually looking across the ball field.
Yeah, it's, it's like in the wrong field.
It is. Did you turn your baseball diamond around?
Yeah, undoubtedly, it's the city's fault.
Didn't say that.
No, I know. So, I mean, we're getting a perspective that's just wrong.
Well, but how many, how many ball fields are out there? There's-
You can see them right there. There's-
They're across the street in higher elevation.
I mean, it's potential that's from another ball field, but then it's like, okay. Yeah, please.
This is where the site is now.
Correct.
That is the view.
I think this makes the wrong-
That's what they're trying to say.
You think maybe, then you think A1 is drawn wrong?
Yeah, because, do that.
Right, no, no, I agree.
So, sheet A1, do you think?
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, if, if-
Sheet A1.
If A1 is that ball field, then that, it doesn't match up right.
That's the radius of the drawing is here.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, thankfully, we already have the site there, so you might-
Yeah, well, yeah, but it's the, it's the old thing about somebody wants to put up a billboard and they put, you know, six or eight pine trees in front of it that look like they've been there 50 years, and it, it just makes it a little misleading, so we just like to, you know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna see treatments, we want to make sure that they're representative of what's actually going to go in.
Yes, and I appreciate that.
He has to be at the mic, that's all.
Oh, I thought there was a mic over there, I'm sorry.
That means you missed my joke on the record.
Probably just as well.
I apologize. I will concede that the drawing is incorrect. I will say that there was no subterfuge intended. I think it's just an error, and I'm going to fire the architect as soon as I'm out of the meeting.
Were you the architect?
No.
Oh, okay, I thought, I thought maybe you were making fun of your own expense, so.
No, no, absolutely not. I, I can't self-fire anyone. Since we had the aerial shot and the, the most recent, I'll return your pack.
Thank you.
The most recent simulation there is correct. I think the commission would accept my guarantee that that photo is exactly what we're doing and that the drawing is incorrect.
Which photo? Clarify.
The view one on your photo sim.
View one?
Is it view two?
I just showed you B3.
I'm sorry.
B3.
Three, yes. Yes, that's, that's the view from the third baseline, I think, is what you're looking at.
Well, again, I still think the height center totally is misleading.
Yes, that height, I-
Something's not adding up with this picture.
I think the engineer, because you can see the existing site slightly in view three, and we're not proposing much more of an increase in height, I think that's how they came up with that height in the photo simulation.
You know, I'll just go back to it. This, this photo, as best as I can tell, is pretty much level. There's no rise shown in this photo at all. Clearly, on A1, there's at least a 10-foot rise. So, I still don't know what that view three is, and maybe I can get past that, but, you know, between, between showing bushes on, you know, around the enclosure, and then giving us a view that looks like it's not going to impact anybody, yet it's not even the right view.
Well, I, I would defend, I would say that that is the right view, and since it's a photo, and you can't see the existing site, and it isn't much higher than the fence, the new site wouldn't be much more of an impact. And that's the view from the ball diamond. Surely, the view from Glen Oaks Boulevard would be more significant, but you can see the site from there as well.
Well, I would have to agree with Mr. Kane. If A1, which does not look at all like this photograph that we're looking here, because the ball field, of course, is oriented so that when you are on first base, the sun is not setting in your eyes, which is the appropriate way to orient it, as opposed to the one that is in A1, it does tend to discredit many of the other drawings. So, there's a, there's a concern here that-
Yes, and-
Some of the other simulations are questionable.
Well, I would, I would concede your apprehension about the drawings, but the photos, I think, are pretty representative of what actually exists in the physical space out there.
Well, I guess what I'm concerned about in A1, well, not that it matters because you're not going to be tearing up the road or anything, but as Mr. Kane has said, well, Mike, are, are these the same documents that are used to, to prepare the environmental NEG deck?
They, they were consulted in the preparation of those documents, I believe.
That is correct. Actually, the view three, it's, the way that the key location map, it's showing what it's, where it's supposed to be shot. I mean, what it's showing.
What's your key three?
If you look at- If you look at View 3, there's...
I got View 3.
And then there's three photographs. The upper-left photograph, it is showing it from, I guess, if we were to flip over to the computer screen...
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, it is showing what it's...
Here's the default, is when you look at this picture and you look at View 3, you assume when you're looking at a ball field, you're looking like this. But really, what's happening, there must be some other ball field out here because you're really looking from this angle. And you're right, the key shows it more accurately. So I do agree with what you're saying. We're just thrown off, by the way, that A1 was plotted.
Yep.
So our perspective is actually coming in that direction.
That...if we move forward from here with the further drawings for building permits, I'll have that corrected. I'll be sure that the reality is reflected in the new drawings.
Was there any effort made to try to camouflage the tower?
We could propose that, and we did, and I think staff can speak to...
Correct. As mentioned in the staff report and my presentation, the previous design was a monopine, and we kind of put our heads together, and we kind of agreed that the outside there, there is no trees. Everything's kind of low-lying. There's nothing it can mimic. And we kind of both agreed that if you had a monopine without any trees around it, it might stick out worse than it really is. And there's an existing water tower, so if there's kind of utilities out there, we're like, well, don't make it...we kind of both agreed, staff with the applicant, don't try to make it look like something that's not out there. Well, this definitely looks like it's not out of place. I mean, you're trying to make it look like a tree's not out of place there. Well, usually camouflage is to mimic something that's kind of around the area. But it was reviewed with design staff, Parks and Rec, with other departments as well. But we all kind of came to that opinion. But this is under the planning commission's review, for as far as design also as well. To kind of go back on how this was evaluated even during the environmental, if you go to View, Proposed View, it's the very last page of the proposed simulation. This would be your view of what it would look like, I guess, if you were not in the ball field, but actually beyond the trees.
And what you're saying is View 1? It's the last page, but it's View 1, just since we're doing things on the record.
That's correct, View 1. That's correct, Mr. Sher.
Ms. Landerga?
To bring up a few more inaccuracies in your drawings to only complicate my concern here.
Of course.
And also for the health of your architect. A2, on A2, we also have the fuel mod zone being called out as being five feet from the side of the building, and the very...I think it's difficult to even know how real this is because it's floating in a space. There's nothing for us to really pin it down location-wise outside of the shrubs, which, as you and I have discovered, don't seem to be there for locational purposes. So I guess, to me, those are, those should be site.
I can reflect those changes in future drawings and make sure that the fire department's requirements are called out, or the correct fuel modification zone.
Was that in our document? Somebody referenced it earlier. I'm not sure if I had seen that, about what the fire department's requirements were.
I looked for it too, but I thought it went somewhere else.
I believe it's one of the...
Fire department's comments have been reflected under Condition Number 12.
Wow.
I think that's probably because it's CMU, which is pretty fire.
We've kind of interrupted you and raised several questions in terms of, for lack of a better phrase, your presentation, whether there are points that you wanted to make or raise that we haven't hit on yet.
No, not really. I am satisfied with that memorandum that staff prepared modifying Condition 9, and that'll help us to continue coverage rather than take the existing site down and then construct the new one. We want to keep the residents in the area on air.
Yes, Mr. Sher.
Just a quick point of clarification. When the pole is built, are these the plans they're work from, or do you, they actually have to submit some specific plans that have the right measurements and the right dimensions and so on?
They're required to have working drawings submitted and reflect any conditions.
Okay, thanks.
Correct working drawings, if I may add.
Yes.
All right, we'll give you a rebuttal period in just a few moments. Were there other questions right now? I guess not. Staff, any comments?
None.
Right back to you on rebuttal. Let me just, again, ask anyone on the commission if you have questions for the speaker, other things to clarify, concerns. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and enter deliberations.
Thank you.
Who'd like to go first?
I'll start.
Mr. Sheets?
Firstly, I don't have any problem with the site. Not much else is going to happen up there, from what I can tell. I'm okay with not camouflaging the site too much, I guess, from the standpoint that there's a water tower. If I put a, what I've always had confusion with, you put a pine, a fake pine tree with the antennas on, you can't see it, but you see the structure down below. And in this case, that would be very obvious because it's a wide-open area. So from that standpoint, I see the thought around camouflaging it, but up here, I'm okay with what I'm seeing. I think the details that we've been hitting on are more about the presentation than they are, than the details on the paperwork than it is about what's going in and if there are any concerns or problems from that standpoint. So at this point, I don't have any problem with what I'm, what I think I'm seeing, and I don't have any issues, any issues with the proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Sheets. Mr. Lee?
Whatever you say.
I knew that was coming.
You're saying that of your own free will.
Yeah, I don't have any problems with this. You know, in some cases, like I said, you know, I might want to have some monopine design in there, but not in this case. You know, you have an eight-foot wall structure there, and this is to me appropriate by itself. I have no concerns.
Thank you. Mr. Yousan?
Well, I would be happy if there was more camouflage, if it was actually camouflaged a little better. The eight-foot wall could be camouflaged, I think, at least the coloring, or putting some shrubs in front of it. And there are ways to, I could see, I've seen it done before, to make this blend in the environment a little better, because as it looks right now, driving on that road, this is an explicit object that you can definitely see. And it just, even though there's other things around there, it just kind of enters that whole natural landscaping of the place. The other thing is, you know, trying to figure out from the views exactly how tall this is in relation to the other places. It got me thinking that, and I don't know, I don't think this is part of the ordinance, but if we could have some type of, this is just for future, and it doesn't actually relate to this, but, because this is here right now, but if we can actually stick a pole in that area before the application comes forward, so we can get an idea, neighbors can get an idea of how tall this thing is actually going to be.
Story pole.
Yeah, like a story pole for homes. And I'm not sure why we don't do it for the wireless, for these things, but I think it would be very helpful for future...
We kind of have one.
Really?
In this particular...
Oh, it was a small one.
The small one. I mean, it gives you at least some sense.
Yeah, but not the 30 feet.
Point taken.
Yeah, 30 feet high pole. That's something I think we should consider. And, I mean, I would want to vote for this if it's, if I know things are done to make this a little, not as blatant while driving down that road to see it. Because the way it looks right now, it does look very, it does look like it's very visible from the road. So I'd like to see what you guys think, if there are possibilities that things we can do to make that happen.
Ms. Landerga?
Well, I actually do agree with Mr. Yousan. I think there are some plantings that would minimize the impact of a monopole, which also doesn't mimic anything else there, but there could be some appropriate plants that would also meet with the fire department's requirements of the fuel mod zone. Otherwise, I think that there's already an existing pole there. It's going to be made legal. I think that's great. The other concern I would have is that if it is going to be added on to, which, of course, you know, the company has the right to do, that at that time, that we have a condition in here that other screening mechanisms or other requirements and view concerns be addressed at that time before that happens. That would be a condition I'd like to see in here, based upon, and that probability. I don't know what we're going to do. I don't think we want a taller pine tree, but just that, when that happens.
Mr. Garcia, do you think that's within our...
Review.
Thank you.
It requires additional planting?
No, no, you were talking...
If they add to the pole...
They increase the height of the pole.
Yeah.
That changes the project.
We'd have to do that.
It's a visual impact, in that we would like to look at it or have other stipulations, address other visual mediation.
All right.
One, you'd like to come back, or two, you just would like that there be additional plantings required? Because I think that because of the co-location issue that applies, and we may, our discretion may be limited there.
And that's why I was raising it.
You might want to have a condition that just triggers automatically if there's additional...
Well, it would have to be in conformance with the fire department, too.
Right.
So I would say, yes, I would, that it would trigger another tree or more trees or some more screening if they do add to it, when they do add to it.
Okay, we'll just have to craft something in the next few minutes while we're chatting.
Okay.
You know, at least for consideration.
All right.
Anything else on that? All right. I, basically, I don't necessarily have a problem with the tower. I don't see the need to monopome it or monopine it in terms of the fact that there's really nothing near trying to camouflage in. I do agree, however, that it could benefit from landscaping, especially along the Glen Oaks side. I don't know that I'd get to the point of picking species and stuff, but I think we'd throw it back and say, you know, and basically just let the, you know, the planning department and/or the city forester pick something that's appropriate and meets the fire staffing. But I think we want to see a little bit of landscaping around, at least to start masking that block. If this was in, and this is, again, this is public recreation space, but if this was in a more public area, I'm really, because of the specific place, I'm willing to deal with the perceived or real inaccuracies of what we were given, just because, okay, we know the specific site, we can see it for ourselves. But if somebody had been coming into town with a, you know, medicine wagon, you know, this would be really trouble. So, you know, in the future, when you guys come before us, somebody really needs to pay attention to what they're doing. If this was in a more dramatic site, you, I would suspect we'd probably be continuing this for more accurate information. I'm comfortable with what we've got. So I'm not sure what we would put in as far as triggering further landscaping with a taller pole, but I think we're, you know, in agreement, I think we can probably find a motion for some landscaping. Mr. Sheets?
To clarify, wasn't there one of the stipulations or conditions that if there were any changes, it had to come back before the commission?
You know?
I didn't see that.
All right.
Commissioner Sheets, are you referring to Condition Number 1? "The subject property shall be developed, maintained, and operating in full compliance with the conditions granted. Any law, statute, ordinance, or regulations applicable to any development or activity to the subject property failure, the applicant to seize any development or activity not in full compliance shall be in violation of these conditions."
You know, I think...
Any modifications to these plans?
Right.
Must be approved.
I think 2 is closer.
Yeah, 2.
Yeah, but I think that revolves from the plans and later adding a...
Well, you could add to that, give further clarification, I guess, just trying to fit into something that was...
See, my difficulty is if they add, if they add height, it does seem like a great idea that maybe something else should be done. I just don't know what at this point. So I guess we can just condition that it has to return to the planning department prior to any, for planning department review, and leave it at that.
Well, the reason I think that it is significant is it is a, it is a, it is a high point if you're looking at it from, you know, it actually falls into the canyon, and although in the lower canyon roads, you would be able to see it, so you would actually be able to see it from Chevy Chase. It's a vista point. It's a military high point, so going higher would definitely, I mean, we might as well put a flag like Eagle Rock did, it goes higher. I really don't want that, but I'm just saying that it will have a significant visual impact, more significant visual impact than proposed.
Mm-hmm. I agree with that statement. I'm just wondering how we condition it.
I don't know.
Suggestions, Mr. Garcia?
Mr. Foy and I were just talking about potential language, and again, it has to do with the fact that there's a government code provision that might be, might allow them to make additions without further discretionary review. So what we're thinking is that if the height is lawfully raised in the future, and such action does not require, or does not trigger further discretionary review by the city, then the applicant must provide additional...
Any other comments from the commission, further thoughts, ideas?
Do we need to add that the condition that landscaping to screen the facility from Glen Oaks shall be provided to the satisfaction?
Yeah, I think I was, I felt pretty good about that one.
About screening from Glen Oaks?
From Glen Oaks.
How would that work?
Like six-foot shrubs?
Kind of like those shrubs that aren't there.
In front of the wall?
Well, shrubs or vines are something that can easily be maintained.
Directly in front of the wall?
If just, if I may rely on the advice of our landscape architect here, presumably such is going to require irrigation, and I don't know if there's water running to that portion of the site.
There's a reservoir there.
It's a little tank right there.
Exactly what you're saying, there's no--
And whether that might be more disruptive, I don't know. You, you know the site better than I do, so--
Put a little hole in it.
Siphon tube.
Obviously, the challenge would be to establish the shrubs.
Right.
It's easy enough to make them, you know, drought-tolerant. It's one thing to start things drought-tolerant.
This, I understand, but this situation exists in many places, and there are watering trucks that will allow these plants to be established, and then I would recommend that they use plants that are drought-tolerant so that that establishment period is quickly achieved.
I think you brought a good point where, you know, it becomes challenging to maintain the shrubs, I think, you know, that's just, in the first place.
Well, yeah, if they're not maintained, then actually they'll be torn out because there'll be a fire hazard.
So, you know, so if we don't have any irrigation or any water--
Excellent.
--either going up there.
There's so many native plants that thrive up there now that you could, I know they look dead to you, but we call them dormant, in my language.
Yeah, my grandmother's been dormant now for 10 years, so, okay. I think it would be okay to condition, we can always create an escape valve revolving around the fire department--
Exactly.
--and the planning commission. Unless there's further discussion, I'm going to ask for a motion. I would suggest that we incorporate that, there's suggested new condition nine to replace the current condition nine, and then whatever conditions the motion maker would like to impose. Ms. Landrigan?
I move that upon review and consideration of all materials and exhibits of current records relative to special recreation development review case number PSR 2008-004, located at 3151 East Glen Oaks Boulevard, including amendment, new amendment number nine and the amendment addressing landscaping with the fire department and further mitigation upon increase in height, and after having conducted a hearing on said manner, that the planning commission hereby approves of said application.
We'll also want to blend into that motion to adopt the--
And to adopt the environmental information.
Can you read?
Form and initial study case number PEIF-2008-11.
Second.
We hit all the, we hit all the conditions everybody's happy with?
Does that work?
If I may just, we read one condition into the record previously, Mr. Garcia did. What I'm hearing is that the commission would like a second additional condition about shrubs shall be added to mitigate the visual impact of the block wall from the roadway to the satisfaction of the director of community services and parks and the fire chief with the cost of watering during the establishment period to be borne by the applicant?
Correct.
And did you say a shrub?
Shrubs.
Shrubs, I wanted to just make sure.
Big shrub.
Yeah, more than one, yes.
Wasn't there also a condition that was passed out also at the beginning of the meeting?
I included that.
Sheen, correct.
Revised condition number nine. Correct.
So, so we have a motion as annanated by a number of people here.
I second it.
And a second for the same. Could you call roll, please?
Commission, Ms. Landrigan?
Aye.
Aye.
Commission, Ms. Sheen?
Aye. No.
Aye, and a vote of four to one, special recreation development review case PSR 2008-04, and has been approved, and the environmental information form, initial study case PEIF 2008-011, has been adopted. Planning department updates, please.
Any updates?
Actually, I think you do.
I would let you know that the, the commission's upheld a hearing recently concerning 1670 Hasbeth Lane, or 1650 Hasbeth Lane perhaps, in which you upheld the denial of the conditional use permit by a planning hearing officer, and the commission's decision has been appealed to the city council, although no date has been set.
May I ask, Ms. Stoller, I think there was an email conversation between Mr. Foy, you and I, and the director of planning.
Yeah, there was a discussion about signing up the planning commission with the APA. So I don't, we used, we used to do that, and I was going to talk to Carmen, and I haven't had a chance to talk to her because we might already be signed up for that. In the past, we have been, so I just haven't had a chance to talk to her.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Those journals, right? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, well--
APA.
No, it's American Planning Association. We can join as a, as a, the planning commission can join as a board.
Okay.
And so we used to be members, and then every month, we would get the planning magazine that would be distributed to the planner, to the planning commission.
So we get as a board, so we only get one magazine, we only get one ticket to the dance, and things like that?
Actually, that's not the case.
No, we used to get five copies of everything.
Okay.
And I just haven't, you know, the changes in the budget, I'm not sure if we're still registered or not, so I was going to talk to the person who would know, which would be Carmen.
Okay.
Yeah, there's specifically, I think, a magazine targeted for the commission, planning commissions. So that would be one I would be interested in.
Thanks, that is the one that I--
That's what we're talking about, right?
--looked at, and I, I forwarded it to our planners here, and they're pursuing it.
Okay, good.
Thanks, I thought you had already done it, so may I call back?
Well, I'll, I'll carry on a conversation I had missed with Mr. Foy that was also kind of triggered from a conversation he shared with me that he had with Mr. Yousayyan. And it was just talking about questions and approach and philosophy and some of the other things. And Mr. Foy broached with me that since we've expanded the, the hearing officer base, that it might be appropriate at some point when we have a, maybe a foreseeable light part of the schedule to have kind of a, for lack of a better phrase, a training session or just kind of a conversation with, with staff, and with maybe Mr. Garcia keeping us out of trouble. What's coming up on agendas for the next two or three meetings, if you know?
I believe we have four items for the June 2nd agenda, because we've had ones that have been continued from various other meetings, and I believe we have three on the June 16th, and that would include some appeals, so we--
And how about this new one? Is that counted on the new June 16th? Did you include that one that we just forwarded to that date?
Yes.
Right, that's, that's one of the ones that we know is on that date.
Okay.
But most of the ones on the second are not, they're items, but they're not appeals.
And Mr. Kane won't be here, and he doesn't need any training.
He would have been good.
He's been trained.
Well, they went through the training next weekend, next time anyway, it's a full day.
And then we--
I can't be trained. I can be broken, but I can't be trained.
We also have an appeal on July 7th and an appeal on July 21st, so--
All right, so maybe--
Our coming meetings will have quite a few appeals on them.
And we're going to, and we're going to start facing vacations and things like that, but let's not let it slip off the horizon too much. I think it would be of benefit for everyone. Okay, and then just a reminder, I won't be here for the next meeting, so fight among yourselves. Anything else from--
Yeah, I have a question. So from now on, when we have these polls come up, is there any way we can require to have story polls, or how would, how would that work for, for something like this?
I'd have to look at how our ordinance is written on story polls. I think right now it's, it's limited to the design review board cases, but I'll, if nothing else, we can amend the code to make it clear, the ordinance that we just passed concerning wireless facilities, just to make sure that we have the flexibility to do that. I, I don't want to say off the bat that we don't have the flexibility now, so let me just take a look at it, and if we don't, we'll include it in a code amendment.
Okay, thanks.
Yes?
case, if we did have, have story polls in areas where they are a visual highlight. This is a high point, so I think that even though we have photographs from certain areas, we never had a photograph that showed how this would be seen from Chevy Chase, where it is at the bottom of, and so there are some, you know, maybe some guidelines that we can come up with. I think that would be very helpful, and if they could have a story poll, I think it would be very helpful for us to, to make a better determination, a fairer determination.
Fair enough.
And if they want to look like pine poles, no.
Anything else?
No.
Motion to adjourn? We are adjourned.
Thanks.